Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order. First, I'll ask you, Madam Clerk, if there are any regrets.
Madam Chair, Councilor O'Meara has regrets. Councilwoman Jenna may be regrets or joining. Councilor Noel may be regrets or joining later. And Councilor Grant may be late.
Okay, and we are joined with others virtually as well, so thank you for that. Do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll proceed. There's no consent or confidential items. Before we move to the discussion item for the evening, I just want to sort of set the table in terms of the process for this evening's meeting. We'll first call on the Commissioner of Planning Neil Garby to give some introductions, then we'll move to the Consultant Jacobs. We have a couple of delegations. However, I will be polling the audience. If any of you have comments or questions you wish to raise, you're more than welcome to come forward at the appropriate time. Staff have indicated they're going to, similar to what they do for an issues report at council, basically keep a list of the questions and then answer the questions at the end versus going back and forth. And then, of course, we'll have questions from members of council as well. So with that, I'll turn the table over to Commissioner Garby.
Thank you, Chair Dottick. Good evening, Chair Dottick and members of the committee. I'd like to open this evening's meeting by saying that we have heard you, we have heard the public. We've stepped back and looked at a fresh and new way to develop an official plan amendment for Midtown. We've considered the need to be interactive and engaging, the need to reach for engagement throughout the municipality, the need to ground truth directions before they're embedded in policy, and the need to make every effort to complete the committee's work by year end. Tonight, the Jacobs team will present the roadmap of how to get there, as well as the work that stretches beyond the OPA, as well as key components of the public engagement plan. We provided you the presentation material ahead of time to provide some early insight into the topic of the evening, so that you can get the most out of the presentation as the team provides the details and context around the material. We will note the caveat of check against delivery, as we often make tweaks to the presentation material at the last minute if there's a different graphic that we'd like to use, or a new request comes in at the last moment. In addition to the work that you'll hear tonight, I did want to bring to your attention that we've also heard the residents' associations and how they were hopeful to have an opportunity to express their concerns and issues in a less formal setting. We are in the process of setting up a meeting for September the 12th, and invitations will be going out in the next day or two, and that is for the residents' associations representatives, so they can have, express their views, and have a dialogue with our consultants. And we'll send that invitation out again in the next day or two. At this moment, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Reed and then to Tim Dickinson to walk through the roadmap to Midtown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, members of the public. Good evening. My name is Mark Reed. I'm an urban design partner with Urban Strategies. And tonight, I and my colleague Tim Dickinson from Jacobs, we're going to present an overall process for a new OPA. We're excited about this process. We have worked hard with staff to develop a process that is very focused on public consultation and engaging all of the stakeholders that need to be consulted with in order to prepare robust and defensible official plan amendment. I'm just trying to advance the screen. Oh, yes, that would be great. Okay, thank you. So here is the Midtown area. This is the area that we're going to be talking about, and we're going to be talking about growth in this area. Tonight, I want to present a methodology and a process for directing and managing growth and change in Midtown. I'm going to start by setting the stage, if you will, with an overview of the Greater Golden Horseshoe, or GGH as it's known in short, the provincial growth directives and what that actually means for Midtown Oakville. You will be familiar with some of this information, but it's important to set the stage. I also want to cover some opportunities that growth in Midtown can provide to the entire community. Following that, I'm going to take you through an overview of a new OPA process and all of the work phases, and there's four, and the actual specific activities that we will be undertaking in each phase of work. I want to end then with an overview of the public engagement framework, which is related to each of the phases of work, before turning it over to my colleague Tim to talk about the integration of the Midtown implementation program within the OPA, as well as work elements that will occur after the OPA is complete. And so that's the agenda for tonight's session. Let's start with an understanding of the GGH. I think it's quite remarkable. The Greater Golden Horseshoe area is one of the fastest-growing urban regions in all of North America. It's second only to the Austin region in Texas. The population is forecast to increase from 2016 from a population of 9.5 million to 14.9 million by 2051. That's an addition of 5 million people in about 35 years. That's a pretty phenomenal rate of growth. And in fact, the GGH is responsible for more than 25% of Canada's gross domestic product. So it's a very important area of the country. It is a destination of choice for people and for businesses relocating from other parts of Canada and around the world. People become, people come because of the high quality of life and the economic opportunities that are afforded here. It's a great place to start a family, to raise a family, to find a job, and to be successful. The region's competitive advantage is its highly educated workforce and its unique multicultural population, which is a significant advantage in our changing knowledge-based economy. So the other thing that's important is, within this context of growth, in 2006, the province of Ontario established the growth plan for the GGH, understanding the growth forecasts that were around at that time. The purpose of the growth plan is to prevent urban sprawl and uncontrolled growth, which has many negative consequences, including increased congestion. It's not a very sustainable approach, and it certainly doesn't support resiliency and climate change initiatives. The growth plan's purpose is to direct new growth to existing built areas, parts of the cities within the region that are already built. And that occurs by promoting intensification. And you will hear, this is a focus on building compact or high-density transit-supportive communities that are linked to one another by transit. And we have all of those, potentially all of those characteristics within Midtown. We have a higher-order transit system, and we have the opportunity to direct and shape growth in Midtown. So, Midtown has been identified as one of 25 urban growth centers, which you know, that is intended to accommodate this future population and employment growth. Growth centers, according to the growth plan, will be planned as focal areas for investment in institutional and regionally-wide public surfaces, for commercial, recreational, cultural, and entertainment uses. They will accommodate and support major transit infrastructure. They will serve as high-density major employment centers that will attract provincially, nationally, and internationally significant employment uses. And they will accommodate a significant share of population and employment growth. And hence, we have the best estimate planning forecast that's been developed by Halton Region and the town of Oakville, which is basically a target that we need to pay attention to as we plan for growth within Midtown. What does this actually mean for Midtown Oakville? Well, to me, as an urban designer, it's a significant community-building opportunity. It also fulfills the town of Oakville's council's strategic plan, vision, and mission to achieve a vibrant, livable community for all. And it will also serve the community in responsible ways that are inclusive, that are dedicated to building economic, social, and environmental sustainability, all very important pillars of any great community. This will also enable Midtown to provide a range of important benefits, such as people and pedestrian-oriented walking areas and overall in urban center, essential new amenities, cultural amenities, recreational amenities, walkable neighborhoods and districts that are unique and different and that are not all the same. New housing choices, thriving education and employment uses are an interesting opportunity to try to achieve within Midtown. Unique placemaking, and of course, improved servicing infrastructure, because there will be more people to service that infrastructure at a lower cost per person. So here, we're talking about growth. So let's just break growth down a little bit in terms of external growth factors that municipal councils can't control, but they create a demand or a pressure for growth. And I want to talk about each one of these. These are identified on the left of the screen, as well as the range of municipal tools and strategies that can direct and effectively manage and shape growth. And these are identified on the right of the screen. So the external factors are, of course, market pressures and market interests, interests of the development community and landowners in the area. They will exert pressure for certain things that we need to understand, address, and determine if that's the appropriate direction that we want to go in. We need to pay attention to provincial and regional policy directions in terms of accommodating our share of growth and employment and population improvement through the joint best planning estimates. We need to be attention, we need to pay attention to the fact that the demand for growth occurs beyond our borders as well, and that it's nationally an interesting place for people to want to gravitate to nationally and internationally. So those are the kind of pressures that we will see in terms of shaping growth. But what are the tools that a municipality has to, in fact, shape that growth? Well, the major tool is an official plan amendment. An official plan amendment that is based on community aspirations for how this part of Oakville should evolve over the long term, what it looks like, what it feels like, what its character is, what are its centers, what are the things that are rotating or functioning around its centers, its urban structure, how it's organized, the range of employment uses and amenities that can be attracted here, of course, land use and ultimately built form. These are all of the things that a municipal council can shape through an OPA. The other compendium to an OPA is detailed design guidelines. These are things that you don't want to put in an OPA because they're very specific. They're, if they were policy, they would be too specific, and every single developer would be pushing forward with an official plan amendment objection because they're too specific. But a community can use these, together with an OPA, to create and harness a set of suggested design objectives for everything that's in Midtown, the public realm, the built form, the way in which buildings meet the streets, the way in which the fronts of new units on residential condominiums hit the ground, where entrances are located. You can control all of those, which are details that you don't necessarily control in an OPA. But together, these things provide a very effective growth management strategy. We also need to pay attention to transportation and servicing capacity. So we will, growth will be prevented if we can't, if we run up against a cap in terms of transportation and servicing. And so we have transportation consultants and servicing consultants as part of this overall process to help guide us and help us understand what those capacities are that may put limits on growth. And finally, you have, as a council, funding and financial strategies that you can put to work to create the kind of community that you want. You may want to have more than 10% of the total land area in Midtown as parkland. You have the ability to purchase land, to create larger parks for civic or recreational uses. Those are tools that you control to shape the look, feel, and character of Midtown. And those are important controls. But again, I want to make sure that you understand that there are factors that are external to your control and those which are internal. And generally, the most successful official plans are ones where there is alignment between those external and those internal growth management control factors. Midtown. Midtown needs a new OPA program to effectively manage and direct growth, and that's what we've been talking about. We have developed with staff a new official plan program that will result in the completion and finalization of the OPA as a banner OPA program, within which many of the most important elements of the Midtown implementation program can also be completed. And these include built form and best planning estimate testing. What do those estimates yield in terms of a built form result? And I'm going to share some information about how we do that testing today. Designing Midtown, which is the urban design or design guideline compendium to the official plan amendment, again, those two things work hand-in-hand to really direct and control growth according to how you want it to be controlled. The public realm master plan, which will start within the overall OPA process, but it will be completed afterwards. The transportation and servicing master plan are both very, very important inputs into this overall process. And ultimately, the goal is to create a fully integrated and comprehensive OPA that has been fully vetted and tested with the broad community, with you, and that will result in a robust and defensible policy framework, and that's really important. You don't want every single development application being forwarded on to LPAT where you don't have control. That's actually really important. That gets to be a very expensive process down the road. The Midtown OPA program has many benefits, and I think this process has a recognition that we're building a new OPA, that we're setting aside work that has been done to date and moving forward in a new direction, engaging the community in how Midtown should look, how it should feel, and capturing their aspirations for how Midtown should evolve. Virtually, all the key Midtown implementation elements that are embedded in the Midtown implementation program can move forward at the same time, with some immediately following. So there's a nice compressed timeframe for everything. And the community, council, developers, landowners, staff, and members of the public will have an opportunity to fully engage on all aspects of the OPA program. And I'm going to share with you the essential fundamental elements of that engagement strategy here tonight as well. So with that, here is a four-phased official plan amendment process that we've collectively developed for Midtown. Again, it occurs in four phases of work, with the first, and I'm going to go into these in detail, but the first really being discovery, understanding existing conditions, understanding the regional market. What do the development community want to do? What are all of the other opportunities and constraints within the existing condition from a transportation, from a servicing level? How do we think about urban schools in this area? What we will be creating is a series of background memos on each of these topics, which will be critical inputs that the community can gain an understanding of exactly the specific opportunities and constraints that are involved in addressing growth in Midtown. The other thing that's important to note here is that the approach to growth management, forecasting and yields, and understanding the joint best planning estimates will undergo a 3D physical testing in this early phase of work. This is not going to be the end of the physical testing. This is just a beginning. This is a placeholder, so that we can understand, generally, what are we getting in terms of height and density? That will be shaped through inputs such as transportation and servicing and community input. So this early testing gives us kind of a ballpark level in terms of height and density, but again, it's going to evolve. The next phase is the land use block concepts. This is a design phase of work where we actually create a different role and function for each of the land use block options. We show different configurations of land use, different configurations of public realm, building, height, density, and transitions to adjacent uses. We will also set up a mechanism for engaging the community to help us evaluate how successful these are against a set of draft vision and principles created in Phase 1. With that understanding and with the public's engagement, we'll move forward and select the most salient elements from each of the options to create a preferred development scenario in Phase 3. We will model that. That's where we will refine the best planning estimates and the height and density that is ultimately going to characterize the area. The preferred option will also be subject to additional technical study, and we will also create a set of draft recommendations that will be embedded in the final report recommendations and the draft and final OPA, including draft and final policy. So that's the overall process. It is going to take place roughly over seven months, and it needs that amount of time to ensure that we can engage in a robust consultation program. I'm going to take you through each of these phases in a little bit more detail, so that you really understand what it is we're doing. So I said again, Phase 1 is really broken up into three component pieces. The first is a range of existing condition memos, highlighting opportunities and constraints from all of the various disciplines, transportation, servicing, urban design, environment, market, from all of those various disciplines that are engaged in providing technical inputs into the OPA. These technical inputs will be used to inform the first round of broad-based consultation, and they'll provide an opportunity for the community to gain valuable information and insights, as well as ask pertinent questions related to key technical questions. So again, we'll need to look at the market, regionally what's happening in the market. And we have NBLC, Barry Lyons, and Watson engaged in part of that. We have RJ Burnside for transportation. We've got a very robust team to help us with all of those technical inputs. The other thing that we will be doing, and I'm going to explain this, is the joint best planning built form 3D testing. So this is an important, as I said, placeholder. This will help us determine a working number for people and jobs per hectare, which is part and parcel of what we're required to do through the regions, joint best planning estimates. And we'll understand the resultant height and density. Again, this is not the finished height and density. This is just a placeholder to understand what we've got to work with. So in the absence of a refined road pattern, a refined public realm plan, we'll be using the schedules of the OPA and putting them on the land base, subtracting out key critical components such as the roads, the right-of-ways, the parks, to get a net development land area. And then, on top of that, we'll undertake a series of designed community elements for each block. I want to just explain to you the methodology for calculating density. This is, we start with a gross site area, which we know Midtown is 104 hectares. We then subtract all of the non-developable lands, so roads are not developable, parks are not developable, utilities, and there may be other lands that are not developable. That will give us a net development set of blocks. And on those blocks, we undertake detailed built form design. And it has to be detailed built form, because buildings have certain dimensions that need to be adhered to, so that buildings can work on a block. And the block doesn't only contain GFA or buildings. It will also contain private open space, so that needs to be designed carefully for each net development block. Once we do that for each block and we add up the total amount of GFA or gross floor area that is on each block, we get a total GFA for the developable lands in Midtown. So that's a simple kind of math. It takes time, it takes design, but GFA is one of the things we need to understand. With GFA, we can take that total, we can divide it by the net development area, and we can get density. And then I can talk to you about what did we learn from this joint best planning estimates? Well, we learned that if we use or employ 25 or 30-story buildings, we might, and that's a height, we might get a density of maybe four or five times coverage. I don't know what that is going to be. We haven't done the work, but that's the process to do the work. And I'm going to share a little bit more about that. The methodology for people and jobs is slightly, is the same for the first line. We need to get a total GFA, but then to get total people and jobs, we need to create a factor for how many units are accommodated within the total gross floor area. And then we use a factor that comes from Halton Region, which is the number of people in each unit, to get the number of people that will be generated through growth in Midtown. We do a similar calculation for employment. We use employment GFA to generate the people by employment type. So office employment generates a different number of people than retail or commercial employment. We take both the residential line and the employment line, we add it together, and that gives us total people and jobs. This is an entirely iterative process. You don't get it right the first time. You start with the block design and massing, which articulates height. You add it all up to get first GFA, then FSI, and then understanding of height, and then you calculate that and understand that against the joint best planning estimates. And we might be short, we might be over, then we do it again. We want to understand how closely we can be aligned to those joint planning estimates. So that's an early technical input. It's not the end of this, because we won't be finalizing any of this until Phase 3 of the work plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. Let's use the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre as an example. Vaughan is a fairly good example, because it is similar to Midtown in the sense that there is lots of underutilized land, there's not very many buildings, there are some buildings. It is an underutilized area with higher-order transit today. There are buildings that would interfere with the proposed future road alignment, and you can see here that there's many roads that would go through buildings. But again, because we're planning out for such a long period of time, you need to create a road network that is connected and it's logical. The other reason we choose this is because it has the same people and jobs target that you do, which is 200, 200 people and jobs per hectare, and this is the same target that Vaughan had. So again, looking at the overall land base, we take away the roadways, because they're not part of the net developable land base. And so we need to understand the right-of-ways for each of the roads and where they're going to be aligned. That's a big piece of work in and of itself. So again, this front-end early testing, we're going to use your OPA schedule for roads and transportation as the basis for those calculations, knowing that that's going to change over the longer term. We're also going to use your OPA schedule for parks and open spaces and take those out. Then we're going to be left with a net developable area. And for the net developable area, here, I'm going to just highlight the blocks that represent net developable area. You can see there, they have buildings on them, they also have open spaces on them. We would generate simple massing, which is designed to calculate on a block-by-block basis the overall density, FSI and height, and determine the people and job forecast. So in this case, these front blocks are all employment uses, and that's part of Vaughan's policy framework. The back blocks are mixed-use and residential. And so for each of these, we would calculate height, density, FSI, and people and jobs. Again, the Phase 1 best planning estimates and built form 3D testing will be refined and finalized in Phase 3 through a whole range of other inputs, including transportation and servicing impacts, final roadway and open space design and components, public and landowner inputs, and precinct and design characteristics. So this is, again, the start of what is a long and iterative process. Finally, the last part of Phase 1 is the development of a draft vision and principles to underpin the OPA. We want to start by lifting policies from your existing OPA and adding some new directions related to built form, sustainability, resiliency, placemaking, and others. And you can see on the right, just a set of the OPA principles that were developed for the VMC, the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre. And you can see that we would likely have some that might be similar to this. These are high-level... These are high-level aspirational principles, and they make sense for a lot of different municipalities. But those are the other inputs, and we would want to have consultation relative to, do these really reflect the values and principles of the community? Are we missing important principles that need to be added? So all of those three elements are the Phase One elements that we would take out for the first round of broad-based engagement, and I'll talk to you about what that looks like a little bit later. The next phase of work is really a design piece of work. This is to craft two-dimensional land use block concepts that convey, in some cases, a different role and function for the urban growth center. So one might be heavily employment, another might be more entertainment destination, another might be higher retail uses. They would convey different public realm arrangements, different urban structure or arrangements, different built form, different precinct strategies. These concepts will inform the second round of broad-based community consultations, and participants will gain information about what each of these are, and will be asked important questions, including help us to evaluate the concepts against the refined vision and principles. Tell us what you like. It's embedded in each of these principles, and we'll pull all the like things together to form the preferred concept. Again, I want to just touch on height and density. Height and density can be calculated on these block, land use block plans. We can calculate them the same way that I just discussed. And of course, servicing and transportation inputs will help us to refine a final and preferred scenario. Community inputs around all of these multiple choices for each scenario will help to generate an understanding of the ideal mix of preferred characteristics to build into the final scenario, which is Phase Three. Phase Three is the development of the preferred option and draft recommendation. Here, I'm showing you some of the OPA schedules from the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre. This is capturing land use precincts. So for each of these, we can establish and create policy direction. These areas can have different heights and densities and different characteristics, physical characteristics. We want to convey all of the elements that are necessary to inform a complete community, as well as create a 3D demonstration plan. And again, I call it a demonstration plan. It can't be a master plan. There's too many variables. A master plan isn't possible. It needs to be flexible. You don't know which developers are going to come forward. So again, the best you can create is a demonstration plan that reflects the goals and policy aspirations for the official plan. Here, you see an urban structure. So this urban structure is built around higher-order transit. You see as the dots on the map. You can see the orange and darker red elements are retail. Some are mandatory, primary commercial retail. Some are permitted retail, but they're designed around a big public realm move that accommodates transit, and this is the kind of use that you want to achieve in a transit-oriented community. So this is, again, another schedule that talks about the urban structure of this place. The other element that we need to, of course, talk about is height and density. And here's another schedule that puts the highest density and height in the station precinct, in the middle with the darkest colors. Then, as the station moves out east and west, the next level of density, and then the lower level of density is the neighborhoods that don't have a lot of mixed use. We also want to put this together in terms of, as I've said, a demonstration model. So this is the VMC, a demonstration model that captures about 200 people and jobs per hectare. You can see that the area is not built out. You don't stop, or you don't use the 200 people and jobs as a cap. In this case, servicing and transportation capacity allow the community to continue to develop to 2051. And so here, we're showing what that level of growth would look like, and we need to do the same thing for Midtown. Phase Four is really pulling all of these recommendations together into a final report, developing the draft OPA and finalizing the OPA and all of the technical inputs that go into it. The policy framework will address among other, among a whole range of topics, but including the role, function, and character of the urban growth center, the range of employment uses that are permitted and encouraged, adequate provisions for parks and open spaces and civic spaces, the optimization of transit investments, health, wellness, biodiversity, and resiliency, all embedded in terms of policy, green infrastructure, green buildings, implementation, funding, and finance mechanisms, as well as land use and built form policies. Finally, you may also identify partnerships, individuals or corporations that can be very instrumental in achieving parts of the vision for the OPA. So that's the OPA as a process. I want to just touch on the major public consultation events that are embedded in this overall process. So the very first is the public launch, communications launch. This is really imminent. This is going to happen very, very soon. The intent of this launch is to introduce the public to the process, to the project, to identify how they can participate online and in person. And it will also promote the first engagement event, which is going to be hosted in October. That first engagement launch will really be about understanding the technical inputs of Phase One, understanding the joint best planning estimates in the 3D testing, and assessing the vision and principles for, that have been established for the OPA. This will be an interactive community consultation. There will, of course, need to be a front presentation, but then we think that we will divide up into groups and have folks be able to brainstorm the vision and principles. They'll be able to meet with the consultants who have drafted the technical reports. They'll be stationed throughout. And we are also thinking that we would have a panel of urban experts to just talk about the process of building something as remarkable as a Midtown, and their experiences, challenges, and opportunities that they've encountered, and give the community an opportunity to ask questions from this outside group as well. The next engagement is really focused in and around November. This is what we call the land use design concepts. Here, we are going to want to use workbooks and roundtable sessions that are facilitated to go through each of the options. We want to understand what people like about each of the options, what they don't like, and what's missing. We will also have a report-back session where everybody who's participating in this in the room will be able to hear a snapshot of people's likes, people's dislikes, so that we can build kind of a common understanding enough to go forward with, enough to go forward with the development of a preferred scenario. Again, all of this will be online as well as in person, and we'll move next to the third engagement, which is the review of the preferred development scenario as well as the primary official plan directions. We're thinking that that, right now, could be a virtual event. It will again include a presentation of all of the findings, a summarization of the technical inputs, and how we got to the preferred official plan amendment and the resulting built form and community structure. And then finally, the statutory meeting, which will occur in the new year, which will be an opportunity, again, for the public to have input into that process. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to my colleague Tim to talk about the remainder of the Midtown implementation project. Thanks, Tim. Sorry.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, members of committee. So my name is Tim Dickinson. I'm the VP of Planning at Jacobs and the overall program manager for the Midtown Implementation Program. So while the new OPA process that Mark just detailed addresses many of the community-building aspirations and opportunities for Midtown, it's really important to note that this represents only the beginning of the Midtown, the overall Midtown Implementation Program. So shown on the screen is an overview of the entire program, and I wanted to quickly walk through this process before providing additional details about the implementation activities that will follow the completion of the OPA in early 2024. So on the top left, you can see the four-phase OPA process that Mark just walked us through, which will take us to the end of this year and culminate in the identification of a preferred land use and built form concept. You can see below how the planned OPA public engagement events that Mark just described align to those phases. And at the bottom, you can see how the meetings of this committee fit into that process. So we're anticipating a committee meeting to correspond roughly with each public engagement event and each major phase in the process so that we can come along through this process together as a team, with staff, and with the public and the committee. Following the completion of the OPA in early 2024, we'll continue to work on program implementation, including developing the functional design for all required public infrastructure, a phasing and implementation plan, and a funding and financing strategy. So these phases of work are expected to be completed by the end of next year, so by the end of 2024, and they'll include a continued public and stakeholder engagement process, including landowners, regulatory agencies, and others. So following our work as a consultant team is the final phase, which is the development, design, and construction, which will occur over many, many years, and it's really where you'll see the fruits of the labor of this group come to fruition as the new community begins to take shape. So just diving in a little bit into the implementation program phases. So this is a blow-up of the work that falls outside of the OPA process, that's still within our remit as the Midtown Implementation Program team. And again, the intent is to complete the majority of this work by the end of next year. So Phase Five, as I mentioned, is the functional design phase, where we will finalize all of the infrastructure master plans, including transportation, servicing, stormwater, utilities, and the public realm. This is the phase where we'll begin making decisions about how energy use can be managed and reduced in Midtown. And ultimately, this will, this phase will culminate in the development of a functional design, which will allow us to prepare capital cost estimates, which, again, will allow us to explore phasing, funding, and financing strategies. So in Phase Six, we'll begin to prepare a more detailed phasing and implementation plan. So this is where we can tackle questions like, you know, what is the best strategy for municipal land acquisition and disposal? How can schools best be accommodated in this mixed-use context? How can we attract and encourage the type of economic development that we want to see in Midtown? This is also when we'll take a deeper dive into issues around transition planning. I know that's been a question that's come up. So how will Midtown look and function as it develops over time in 2031, in 2041, and 2051? So that's where we'll be tackling that question or those questions and that topic. And then the last phase of our work is Phase Seven, which is the funding and financing strategy. So this is where we'll start to, armed with a capital cost estimate for all of the required infrastructure, we can begin to explore, you know, how much is this going to cost the town and how can we develop a strategy for paying for it? And then again, as I mentioned, the ability for the town to influence what Midtown will look and feel like continues long after we're gone and we're finished our work through the development, design, and construction phase. So this is where town staff, council, and members of the community will continue to have the opportunity to review and provide input through environmental assessments, through the review of development applications, and through review and permitting of design and construction documents. So a lot of the specifics around minimizing impacts from construction are really addressed at that final stage in the process. So with that, Mark, sorry, Neil, I'm going to pass it back to you.
Madam Chair, just to wrap the presentation up, the last aspect that I would like to draw the committee's attention to is the issues tracking sheet that's found on Appendix A of the staff report. This is intended to be a dynamic document that will be built as we go. The intention is to use this as a tool on the website and for any member of council or the public, where they can find responses to the issues that they've identified, and we're tracking those issues, as Chair Duttic mentioned, as we go along. So it's a dynamic tool that we'll present to this committee at each meeting, but also as a dynamic way as things are addressed. It'll be on the website. There's a lot of work to do, as you can tell, in a short period of time. And to make our Midtown Committee of the whole meetings, to make sure that they're interactive and meaningful, September 12th is too soon to complete all the Phase One work that Mark outlined. To that end, our next meeting will be in October. It will be a packed agenda, an exciting agenda, and we look forward to a great process that everyone can be proud of. So Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you to conduct the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, you had mentioned that the 12th was when you were hoping to meet with the residents association, and that's outside of members of the public who will also have an opportunity, but just geared towards the residents association, so that September 12th meeting is not lost.
That's correct. September 12th will be a meeting with the resident associations representatives.
Thank you. Before I go to the delegations and to the poll, the audience, I had hoped to hear from them first and then have a, an opportunity for staff to respond to the questions or concerns that were raised. But I see two members of council with their hands raised. Did you want to speak first before hearing from the delegates? Or are you willing to stand down, Counselor McNeese? Counselor Elgar, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I will stand down and wait until I hear from the constituents. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm willing to do the same. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will make note of the order. And Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the first delegate.
The first delegation is Douglas McKirkin with Trafalgar Chartwell Residents Association.
Welcome, Douglas. We look forward to hearing from you. And again, as I mentioned at the onset of the meeting, if you have questions, by all means, raise those. But if you have concerns you want to address, by all means, share those as well. Thank you.
Is it working now? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm Douglas McKirkin. I'm representing the Trafalgar Chartwell Residents Association. Can I have the first slide, please? So I only have two slides. Overall, from our point of view, this is a slow start, and we understand there's a colossal amount of work to be done. So it's good work so far, we think. I'm pleased to see the population and employment estimates. It seems clear that these are targets but not caps. If that's not so, we'd be grateful to understand. But our understanding of these numbers is that this is a fraction of the total growth mandated by the province in the various, by the various states that has been assigned to Midtown Oakville. And so they're a minimum rather than a maximum. That's our understanding. We're also pleased to see the issues tracking mechanism. It was, you know, an obvious, necessary thing. But as already been said, there's a ton of work to be done. We're skeptical about the Q4 2023 completion, and we're concerned about scope. We think there may be some missing elements. If I could have the next slide, please. The first major bullet here probably shouldn't be, it's not really scope. It's a concern about conditions for success. Success, here, I'm talking about the realization of the vision for Midtown. We're anxious about the town's ability to actually control the development as it progresses such that it actually aligns with the plan. We can produce a gorgeous plan, but recent... We can produce a gorgeous plan, but recent, I guess, recent interventions by the provincial government really give us concern that we don't actually, as a town, have the ability to manage our own affairs. So our question to council is what can the public do to help? You know, our only power is to lobby our provincial representatives and the provincial government. We can do that, but we need some degree of encouragement, leadership from council. The second bullet here, we don't really understand how the development applications, as they come in, and there are three major applications on the books already, will be affected by the amended official plan when it is finally delivered. It looks to us as though the three proposed developments will satisfy a significant fraction of the 20,000 approximately people and jobs by 2031. And so we don't really understand what's to stop other landowners making development proposals, which will then eventually be approved and will end up way exceeding the target for, or the estimate for 2031, and so on through the following targets. Again, the question is, what can the public do to help? Process for public engagement, I'm pleased to see what has been proposed. I'm still not entirely sure that it'll be enough, but as long as we're all willing to be flexible, let's give it a try. The second subordinate bullet there is something that we worry about. We're talking about building a new city in 25 years or something like that, and there are bound to be mistakes made, problems created, and we don't think that the normal service Oakville 3-1-1 kind of mechanism will be robust enough to deal with that. We think there will need to be some ongoing mechanism so that these kinds of quality-of-life issues, noise, litter, crime, whatever, can be addressed and dealt with robustly and quickly. And then the final major bullet, I may have heard that this is in the second or third phase, that you're going to start dealing with impacts, start to address from a planning perspective, impacts on surrounding areas from the Midtown build-out. But if the build-out is starting relatively soon, in the next few years, we anticipate all of these issues materializing very quickly. As you've got construction volume, people moving in, there's going to be pressure on all the major roads, nearby roads, the arterials, and the north-south roads connecting Cornwall to downtown. Pedestrian safety is a big concern of ours, both at major intersections and from bikes and scooters on narrow sidewalks throughout the existing neighborhoods. And then we anticipate parking issues. As Midtown is designed as a carless place, people are nevertheless going to be using cars to start with until we get over that, and where are they going to park? We think they're going to spill over into the surrounding residential areas and parking, you know, available parking, like the community center on Reynolds, the Trafalgar Community Center, GoTrain parking, and so on. So that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the comments and the suggestions contained therein. Appreciate it very much. I think staff have captured a few of the questions you have, and they'll respond at the appropriate time, so thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I ask you to call the next delegate.
The next delegation is Chris Kowalczuk.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilors, town staff. I didn't bring any PowerPoint presentation, so I apologize in advance because I know how much the town loves a PowerPoint presentation. Sat at home, watched this, eating a glass, drinking a glass of wine with a steak, watching it on YouTube channel. So as someone who was involved for a long time with planning and development issues, and I was involved with the Residents' Association when they brought in Rain Condo, and then I've come in the past year and a half about development charges. So relating to this development on the whole, just as the proposed Glen Abbey development was, it's something that wasn't necessarily on the books when they built the infrastructure for the town. So my concern is a development of this size, for one, now that I'm an old crusty taxpayer, is who's going to fund the downstream improvements for this development, which will be off the property, where the developers will not be paying for that? I assume that it's the existing tax base that will subsidize every development, as we are currently now, under the new rules that have been dictated down from, as the gentleman put it so delicately, the ephemera thrown out by the provincial government. My concern with the process you've proposed with all the consultation is that if the province, the current regime of the province does find out you're doing consultation, they may nip this in the bud because that doesn't seem to be their forte, you know, hence the fact that, you know, they've mandated this element of growth. As far as I understand, and I'll ask, I don't know who can answer, that we are currently subsidizing developments. Every existing taxpayer is developing every new development. So, you know, we're all speaking to this, you know, 20, 25 years down the road, but who's going to be funding the downstream improvements that are required for a development of this size? Is that the existing tax base? Is that a, can someone speak to that?
That will be raised, but you're...
Oh, I see, at the end, when we'll bring...
Yeah, but just to give you a certain element of assurance, Councilor Elgar, at every opportunity raises this issue, as does many other members of council. The fact that we're having the amount we can allot towards development charges decreases consistently, meaning that we, the taxpayers, have to pick up the share that's lost.
Essentially, so essentially, the existing tax base is subsidizing any new development in Oakville, and this will be the case with this development under the current regime as legislation is written, right? So I'm glad to see, to the gentleman's point about the time window you've given yourselves to do that sort of consultation. I was involved with the visioning they did for Kerr Street for the Vision 257, and it sounds like they're kind of going on that model, which is great. It's fascinating how there's so many, we are all talking about this development, that none of us are going to really, you know, it's not going to be our concern, it's going to be somebody else's. And I understand that the municipality is limited as to what they can dictate, and we've heard the consultants, you know, oh, sustainability, and oh, this, that, but, you know, is it sustainable? Because the sort of, you know, building envelopes that they're building now are consistent with what they've been doing since the 40s. You know, since the 60s, we've known we should be orienting, you know, subdivision developments for passive solar and putting in, but we're not doing any of that because I guess that gets mandated at a provincial level. So how do we make this development so it's a net zero to the rest of the community? I mean, I know the municipality only has so many tools in the box, but is there a way, not necessarily to push back, but to make the case with the province that the existing base shouldn't be subsidizing and that we should be allowed to mandate sustainability and that, you know, that pod operates independent of itself? There's a gray water system, you know, there's, I don't know how much can be mandated, but I would like to see that because it's kind of been 40 years, and, you know, we talk a good game, but when it's boots on the ground, you know, they're building the same stuff they built 40, 50 years ago, except for just putting in a little bit more R-value. So thank you for your time. That was really just my point about who's going to subsidize this development. I guess the answer is us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it. Do we have additional delegations?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next delegation is Todd Milligan.
Welcome, Mr. Milligan. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Councilor Duttic, and fellow councilors, and members of the public. I, as well as Mr. Kowalczuk, didn't come with any PowerPoint presentations or any notes or anything, but speaking from the heart as a longtime, multi-generational, family Oakville resident, I have a few major concerns, and the main concern that I just cannot get my head around is the fact nobody, and I've been to the meetings, that marathon meeting that went on for about four hours a couple of weeks ago, and in this meeting as well, and kudos to the gentleman from their consulting firms and everything else, but nothing, nothing has been discussed with respect to hospital facility improvements, or police facility improvements, or anything to be implemented in this whole Midtown plan. And that concerns me because, you know, if we all just take a second here, drop our job titles, drop our, you know, whatever, just think, go inwards for a second and just think, you know, how many of us take our health for granted right now? How many have thought about our health in the last hour? Anything can strike one of us at any time, a health crisis. We need to ensure that we can get to that health facility in the fastest, most convenient way possible. The amount of people that they want to put in this Midtown core is going to be well over 100,000 in the next 30 years, from my understanding, correct? We need to think long-term with this whole plan, if not to build something as it goes forward, to at least allocate space for it, because with increased population is increased crime. Sorry to say, but that's the way of life. And my background is personal training. I have no understanding of how buildings are built or any of the engineering things and whatever, but I will say this, if we take the analogy of the human body as being like the community, the heart is the hospital, the immune system is the police services to serve and protect, the networks of roadways and everything else are the arteries. We need to make sure that we get the vital necessities to be able to function, and without these two major things, I think we're really not looking as we should, full scope. And yeah, I mean, that's just my point, and I just wish that the councilors, the town as a whole, the consultants and everybody else would at least consider this as the thing, because don't forget, council, you are the brains to this entity, and I don't want to see Midtown become the midsection, you know, where there's too much bloating, there's too much, you know, weight to carry, and our system, as it is, the health department, the hospital, is totally over, undercapacitated, under, overcapacitated, and I just would like to see the town try and implement those two components.
Very valid concerns. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any further delegations before I poll the audience?
Yes, Madam Chair. Anita Mackey, Oakville Lakeside Residents' Association.
I believe they wanted to have the opportunity, should they want to speak. I don't know if you need to speak. Would you like to? Do you want to come forward then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's what we're here for.
So thank you. It's Anita Mackey from the Lakeside Residents' Association, and I was very pleased with the presentation tonight because I do think this is a much more robust process and plan and lots of things that need to be thought about before it was sort of dumped on everybody who couldn't follow it. So thank you for that. I have a series of questions. I don't think you're answering them tonight, and I can certainly submit them, but some of them do relate to, you know, how Midtown fits into the overall plan in Oakville. Like, it is not going to be an island, and it's going to be extremely dense, and how will it fit in? And one of the areas, and I think it was in the discovery section, there was a list of things that were going to be explored, one of the things I didn't see was how are we dealing with green space in such a very small plot of land? And if the town wants to implement buying strategy, they need to do it now and not wait till the implementation stage. It'll be way too late, there'll be no land, and I think it needs to be dealt with and explored at the early discovery stages and not be left. I think they also need to, while I don't know, and this is another question, how were the boundaries of Midtown determined? This is an extremely small plot of land, and how does that size compare to other growth, urban growth areas that have been identified? This one seems extremely small. There isn't a lot of green space, and there's natural boundaries with highways and creeks and ravines and things that you can't build on, and they don't make great parks either. So how is that determined? And can the town, while maybe they can't change that boundary, look up a little bit? We have right across the highway a great big mall with tons of parking lots, space that's not the highest and best use of land. How is that factored into what can be done to alleviate the density and stress on Midtown? Because I think there's going to be a lot of stress on this area. So that were some of our questions. Yeah, I think those were the main ones, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you attending and bringing those forward. Do we have any, yes, Trish?
Good evening, Mayor Burton, and Chair Kathy Duttic, and councilors. I'm pleased to be here tonight. I have to tell you, I wasn't looking forward to this meeting, and I have to say, I think we're going in a good direction here, and I hope you don't, I hope it continues. My question is, and one of the speakers earlier touched on it, but I want to make sure that this is definitely recorded because I think it's really important. We still don't understand how the applications we know that have been submitted by developers are fitting into this whole plan. Is the town going to now say, no, we're going to tell you what you can build, instead of the way we have kind of felt it, that the developers were planning what this was going to look like? So to me, I want to know, how will the town, how will these applications fit into our growth management strategy, rather than our growth management strategy come from the applications that have already been submitted? Thank you.
Very valid questions and very valid concerns. I'll poll the audience, is there anybody else here who would either like to raise, yes, sir, if you want to come forward, by all means?
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak, councilors, and the public. My name is Michael Breen, and I'm a resident in the area that is impacted. And the one issue that I keep waiting to hear about, which I'm not hearing about, is, to my background, which... to my background, which is finance. We have developers who are eager to contribute to our community. However, the due diligence around the developers has not been touched on. Just looking at District Capital, for instance, which is the name that is associated with Midtown so far, started in 2015, relatively new company, small team, never built anything over 10 stories high. They're now down for over 150 stories. What capital resources do they have? What kind of commitment are they prepared to make? What is behind that commitment? And where is the money coming from? We see high net worth individuals, ultra-high net worth individuals. It's like you're buying gasoline. I mean, is this offshore money? Is this onshore money? And where's the commitment? We come up with a great plan, but as we've already seen, if you're over on Cornwall, there's a hole in the ground there that's been there for a while. And it now says, "bridge financing," because the money wasn't there. I'm not familiar with Rain. Other than I know, there were similar problems. So in this instance, if there could be a more robust due diligence around the financial wherewithal of people who are standing behind this plan that we're putting together, I think it would serve us all in best interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I saw another hand toward, yes, by all means, come forward.
My name is Linda Sinelli and I'm with the BVRA. And this is just my personal question because I'm a little bit not understanding something. Um, my question is, is this all privately owned land? Is there publicly owned and privately owned? Is it a lot of small privately owned land pieces? Is it one large privately owned land piece? Because we've learned that when somebody owns private land and wants to build, there's very limited restrictions and very limited demands we can make on them. And it's really difficult to put in a cohesive plan and follow it if somebody can tell you that they don't have to do it because they own the private land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other additional speakers that'd like to come? Yes, please, come on forward and then the gentleman up front afterwards, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Mary Saunders. I am a resident of Southeast Oakville. I was puzzled by the, the last bit of the presentation where they said environmental assessments are going to happen in Phase Eight. It struck me that that was rather late in the process to be considering what impact. Now, I don't know if I missed something earlier where they take that sort of thing into account earlier on, but it seemed to me that that was dribbling off the end and could have a major effect. So I'm interested to see that being addressed in the issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, if you would like to come down.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jim Goodfellow. I'm a long-term resident in Southeast Oakville. Um, and I just had a couple of observations to make and questions that might be addressed, that you might have addressed. One is the, first thing is, I'm still trying to absorb what you folks presented and, and it strikes me that we're now changing horses again. You know, we had a system that was, you know, you could call the height and bonus system. We then came on with the FSI system. I don't know whether this is now a new system that is coming in. I don't know where the, the old, the previous FSI methodology, you know, so all of that is confused and I would assume you're going to be sorting that out. But I think that is going to play into also the developers who, you know, jumped the gun on the FS, the change to the FSI, submitted the applications in, in hopes that, in anticipation that this was where we're going. Now we're changing course. That'll be a dynamic that we'll have to manage, kind of thing. So that's one observation. Second observation is the finance. I too am, I come from a finance background. Um, and I just echo the previous speaker about concentration risk. District is now going to be building, I think, three plus, the last meeting, two. That's five of the major buildings. That's a very big concentration piece. Developers can fail. You know, it's not the, it's so it's, do they have the capacity, the experience to, this is a complex thing to manage. And, uh, and so that concentration risk, and that leads to a second piece. Then all of the presentations, we don't have any assessment of risk. So it's great to have presentations with benefits and opportunities, but where is also the critical risks here in this thing? This is a massive project over many years and what are the key risks that council needs and your successors need to be focused on that you, you're tracking and measuring? And that can, and, and I think the concentration risk of developers is just one, one example of that. We've got physical risks like storms, sewage and all of that's been mentioned before. So, so a process should be put in place to sort of start building, you know, what are the major risks that need to be addressed and managed? Uh, and, uh, second piece is measurable objectives. We need, if you want to track, and a previous speaker said about, you know, how are we going to ensure implementation? Your presentations this morning, this happened, echoed with the others is, you know, there's a lack of measurable targets and outcomes. You know, our, your pledge of 33,000 new units, that's a measurable thing. It's a target you can track against, kind of thing. But we talk about parklands, promenades, all that kind. What are the measurable things that you put in that say that we're going to track against? Um, and so, uh, my experience with governments and with business is that, you know, if you want to think a thing about what will help, you know, anticipate a successful project, specificity on targets and measurable objectives and measurable outcomes. And, you know, uh, and then holding people accountable. So that being, uh, two more points, finance. It's way too late to have in Phase Four where we're start thinking about cash flows and budgets and what have you. You had last year, I think in your plan process, a 10-year forecast of capital expenditures. That came to a billion dollars, I think it was 1.1 billion. That's a lot of money for the town. This is an overlay on the 1.1 billion. You've still got to do the 1.1 billion because that's supporting the other capital infrastructure. So we have got to know, and I think council has to know as you're going through here, what is the magnitude of the expenditure here? What's the impact of the provincial government cutting back and, you know, uh, cutting out the funding sources? Who's going to, you know, how much is this all going to cost and who's going to pay for it? And by the way, it's us in the final analysis. And for the purposes of you folks over there, we are among the highest tax jurisdictions. So we're not, so just don't assume that you can allow, everything can fund out to us. Um, and, uh, I think that's a final, final comment, uh, for you council. As I've listened to this and, and my experience with business and my experience with business boards is when you have a major project like this, the first thing you look and says, well, who's in charge? And you'd be little, look, saying, you'd be wanting to say, well, where's the CEO? See, the, I am honestly confused as to who's in charge, um, on this. It looks to me, with a little, that now the consultants are in charge. If the consultants are coming in and are running the process, that's, in my view, not good news. So where's, who's in charge? Where's our chief administrative? Who are the executives that are in charge? Who's in charge here? And, and I think that is an issue for you council to be paying attention to. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further? Okay, I'll restrict it to table and before I go to, and I'll look to you, Commissioner Garby, if you'd rather hear from members of council rather than answer questions, but I'd just like to give those of you who did delegate, if you'd be so kind as to put your name, address and contact information on the sign-in sheet at the back of the room. That way we have the opportunity to follow up with you in regards to your delegations and to make sure we have the information correctly. Commissioner Garby.
Madam Chair, I'm in your hands. We can try, I've captured some of the questions, we can try to answer them or we can take them back and put them in our tracking sheet. But if there's immediate answers, perhaps I can rely on council to, to highlight ones that you'd really like to hear now. There may, there, there is quite a number of them. Some of them we'll have to research a little bit and some we can provide ready answers for, but perhaps I could offer that.
Thank you. I think that's a great suggestion. Um, and again, we'll have that issues list for not only ourselves, but members of the public to be able to see the questions, the answers. And as you say, sometimes it may take a bit of digging for the appropriate answers to those questions that have been raised. So, um, I know Counselor Olger, you were the first off the mark and then Counselor McNeese, Counselor Chisholm and Counselor Nanda.
Okay. Thank you, Hugh, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thanks for saying, let's listen to the delegations first and also for the, the walk-ons who were in, in the chamber to come and speak to us because they raised fantastic points. I, I thank staff for what they presented tonight. My, my concern is we have to fully understand as councilors, um, what, where we're going. I've got issues with the people per unit. Never mind the number of units, people per unit. Like, is it just in stone that one-bedroom units will be 1.17 people per unit and that the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units are going to be just 1.94 people per unit? Because as recently as this week, Doug Ford was saying that he, these units are going to be three people per unit. And that was at the AMO conference in his speech. So like, we've got a big disparity here between three units and two and three bedrooms that we're going to build, they're only going to get 1.94. And if that was the basis of the whole water and wastewater master plan, we're going to have a lot of people in midtown alone that aren't going to be able to flush the toilets and it, for it to go anywhere. So I think we have to go back to fundamental basics on where we are going. Midtown until tonight, I thought was 103 hectares. I learned tonight from the consultant, it's apparently gone to 104 hectares, which is the first I've ever seen. To 2051, people and jobs per hectare on 12.9, like on, it's like, the net density of midtown is not even a hectare. And they're talking that if you, you look at 2051, we are going to have people and jobs, 49,740. Those are the projections. And, and, and I'm just, I just want to know, do we have the right numbers even coming into the units as getting back to the basics? Uh, I hope we can get it done by December, but I'm worried that based on, and one of the, one of the delegates mentioned, the district, uh, application, they use the numbers, people per unit that were provided to them, basically on the water and wastewater master plan that was done in 2021, when I read. So, and as a gentleman saying, like, they're talking 50, 58 and 44 stories, buildings, those three. And if, if everything was to that density, even though we only have four, um, you know, they're, they're 0.89 net hectares, what they're going to build on, in the whole of midtown to meet the population for the residential, we'd only need 12.9 hectares in total. So like, and if, and I think, okay, if they're going to put 12.9, like that's huge number in a small area, then if I have another plot of land, why would I not be allowed basically the same density? Like, I just, I just hope with all the other questions that the, the delegations have asked, that we can go back to basics and try to get the numbers and numbers that will work. So, I don't know, I've got huge concerns that we, we've got a lot of numbers being thrown out where in 2051, we're going to have 444,000 people, people and jobs. Uh, that's a, that's a, that's where we're, we're basically going right now. So according to the re, the numbers that we have, so I've got all, I've done all the 14 growth areas that we have plus the rest of Oakville. And it, I don't, I, I think before we go forward, we got to get basics of where we should be going. So that's my little rant for the evening and I'll sit back and wait. So, thank you.
Could, could I frame it in the form of a question for you? I.e. that you have questions relating to the numbers that are going to be provided that basically provide the, the building blocks on which we develop a plan?
We have to get there. And we're so far from there now that I don't know whether we will get there by December. Thank you.
Okay, I'll let Commissioner Garby, would you like to speak to that?
I'll, I'll do my best, Madam Chair. And this, I'm sure will be part of an ongoing dialogue that we'll have with all members of council. The, the numbers, as we saw in the presentation last week, that they, they are complex and they do have a lot of inputs. So I fully expect to, to have an ongoing dialogue about this. Uh, so as far as infrastructure planning, we're going to use the numbers that the region provides us. So that's the joint best planning estimates that we've developed together as well as the persons per unit. So that's the source. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to have a discussion, uh, related to, well, I don't know if I can have a discussion, but perhaps someone from the region can, can assist in, on how those are developed.
Okay. Again, I think that's an important item to have tracked on the issues list so that everybody fully understands what the numbers are that we're dealing with, whether it's people per unit or, you know, best planning estimates, things of that nature. So I appreciate that. Okay, Counselor McNeese.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Uh, first want to thank all the delegates for excellent information and I agree the walk-ons provided a lot of, uh, great detail and ideas as well. And, uh, thank the consultant for a really detailed overview and, and staff for supporting this as well. So first I have some questions related, or maybe comments related to Phase 1A, uh, which is, uh, getting into the, the backgrounder, which I think is a great idea to dive deep into some of these issues. Um, and I've heard some, some stuff brought forward. I had some ideas myself that I want to ensure get covered, uh, in this. So I've got a bit of a list I'll go through in no particular order. Uh, the last delegate sort of mentioned, what is the structure? Who is the CEO? Who's in charge? I would love to see some research on governance and structure for projects like this. Um, you know, I've, I've a planning background and I've seen in major developments, if it's, um, you know, Edmonton City Center Airport, they had an office that was dedicated just to that project. Hamilton's LRT, out of Hamilton's, you know, LRT Secretariat that just focused on that. And there was that kind of CEO, that person in charge, um, a team that supported it. Um, so I think that's, uh, really good advice and, and effective model. So I'd love to see that dove into and discussed as best practices. Here's some good examples, pros and cons, things like that, so we can make a very informed decision. Uh, secondly, um, I, I was at the AMO conference this week, Association of Municipalities Ontario. Obviously housing was a very hot topic, attended as many sessions on, uh, as I could, as well as my colleagues. One thing came up on what Burlington's doing with MTSA's, uh, metropolitan, or, uh, major transit-supported areas. They're looking at community planning permit system as a planning tool, um, to implement that and get, get some of the form right. I would love to see a deeper dive into that. I've, I've asked for staff reports and I've seen it work quite well in other areas as well as in the U.S. as, as form-based codes and form-based policies. Um, it is, you know, a bit technical and I'd love to see a deep dive into that as well as other tools that are related to it, that are planning tools that can kind of bring us that form that we need to make a, an active vibrant, uh, community. So I'd love more details on that. I know these things are complicated and I think the backgrounder's help so that we all understand it, the public can understand it, uh, as well. And, and, you know, I even heard some new terms at the conference of, uh, PUDs, which I think is, uh, planned unit development zones. And many, many other tools are going on where we're trying to figure out how to make stuff more affordable and vibrant and, and affordable as well. I'd love to see some discussion on how we can have some affordable units, um, through inclusionary zoning or other tools. Um, I heard, uh, some stuff around, uh, I, I see there's a backgrounder on energy planning. A delegate mentioned, you know, passive solar. Passive solar can be high-rise buildings now. We're seeing many examples, the codes are changing. I'd love to see that covered as well as timber frame construction. Many provinces are, are doing that. I've seen 10 stories plus of. are doing that, I've seen 10 stories plus of it. I think that's the future of building, and I think we can get ahead of it if we understand it and start to look at how we could use that. A delegate mentioned hospitals, please, I'd love to add schools to the list. What are schools going to look like in these high-rise, dense places? We're hearing podium schools, we haven't actually seen them built in many places. So, starting to discuss, you know, here's some best practices, here's what it might look like, what are some options, so we can have that discussion with the community. So, I think I'll stop there as far as Phase 1A, and I would like to just touch on engagement. I agree with one of the delegates, I would love to see more. You know, there are processes like citizens panels or expert panels that can kind of run the continuum of it, to really get, you know, I've seen them produce reports and things like that, making sure we get a representative sample of the community engaged on this, making sure that we go to the places where the community is at, instead of expecting them all to come to us, I think would be really valuable. And I'd also suggest that the last engagement, I believe it was in December, I'm worried about making that virtual, seeing, I mean, to deal with these planning concepts and stuff, I find it's hard to do on a screen, you need to see them, interact with them. That's the best way to sort of provide feedback. So, those would be my suggestions around engagement, and I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNeese. Councillor Chisholm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick comments and a recommendation or suggestion. I'd like to see more of a deep dive in the Parkland acquisition in Midtown. That's very important, based on the intensification of this area. And I think the points were well taken from our delegations, some excellent information. And I think one individual, I can't remember, indicated that we should be looking at acquisition now, and not waiting down the line. There we go. Thank you. We want to, I think we need to start moving on that as soon as possible. The second question, Neil, I got really, I understand the process and where we're going and so forth, and I think it's very aggressive, and hope we can get to those targets, but my concern is that we do have right now applications in appeal with the Ontario Lands Tribunal. How do we, how do we, knowing where we're moving on this, how do we mitigate, how do we manage this situation?
Through you, to you, councillor Chisholm, there are applications, and they are at the board, and what we're embarking on is really forming our position at the board. And that, all of the work that we're doing helps us, helps us to provide guidance on those development applications. So, they've filed, it's true that they've enshrined their rights at the date of their application. However, working with them, we can perhaps mitigate an extensive, or even at all, an OLT hearing, if we have a meeting of the minds, let's see. So, if our concepts align with what they're willing to do, then that's really great. So, there's a couple of purposes of proceeding on the way we are, is, one, to inform our position at the board, and also to try to work together collaboratively with the development community to avoid a hearing in the first place. So, we can also take that back, and I can have our solicitor provide a little bit more detail on that. It's an important question, and I think it's worth a deeper dive on.
Thank you, Neil. I fully agree with that. I think we need to have a better understanding on the legal positions, and also with litigation going on at the OLT on this, is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there the possibility, talking about where we're going with our OP, and there's some alignment, is there consideration or the thought process that they would extend or pull back their applications?
Through you, Madam Chair, there's always that opportunity, that's our hope, that we'll be able to work collaboratively, as opposed to confrontationally at the board. That's our hope.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garby, maybe it would be a benefit if you could just give us, I know we got a update from one of our legal staff regarding the very first meeting of some of these OLT hearings. Is it not running in tangent to our deadline of December? From what I remember, I saw something of December being the very first meeting for the hearing.
To you, Madam Chair, there is a CMC, a Case Management Conference, scheduled for mid-December, and that's another, that highlights the importance of concluding this committee's work by December, so we can present our positions or our guidance at that time, and we can demonstrate we're moving forward, and we're working collaboratively, and that's not the hearing, it's a case management conference, the hearing hasn't been set.
Fully appreciate. A lot of that will be in camera, and, but just for the benefit of the members of the public, this is a question that does come up frequently, how does this affect the cases, pardon me, at the OLT and what we're dealing with? So, thank you for the clarification on that. Councillor Nanda.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for the presentation, and to the audience for all the great remarks and questions. It gives us a lot of insight and a lot of things to think about as we're moving through this process. I did have some clarifying questions, whether they're answered now or later, but just in terms of the old OP that we had, how much will we be working with that? Or what specific factors would we be looking into to change from the last plan to the new plan that we're working on? And even specifically, what would be the minimum FSI required at this point to meet our targets, and how would that differ from our past plan? And how would that change within the different specific areas of Midtown? And what would those work to be at? And I was looking at the employment numbers, I just want clarification on whether these numbers mean, do we have a goal of what percentage of employment we expect the population that's living within Midtown to be working within Midtown? Or are these just numbers of employment of anybody coming into Midtown and working? And, yeah, what is the difference of that? And just a clarification on new rules, are, is it changing that retail shops will no longer be considered in the employment numbers? Has that changed?
Madam Chair, I'll answer it, and then Mark will clean up what I, the great job that I'm going to do right now. So, in terms of what, so what we've done, what we're presenting tonight is a new process to develop an OPA. So, the previous drafts, they're going to set aside, they might be used as reference, but they're really, we're designing a process from the ground up. So, that is, that's the intent of the process. A lot of the questions that you're asking about the detailed FSI will, and maybe, Mark, you can describe it a bit better than I can, will be built as we go along. So, the testing of the joint best planning estimates, the block planning, and the tools that Mark's described, will answer some of those questions about employment, about the mix, about FSI that's needed to accommodate the population. So, we're at the start of that process, and as we move along through the different phases, 1, 2, 3, and 4, you'll see a lot of those questions answered. Mark?
Thank you, Neil. Oh, sorry. Through you, Madam Chair, councillor Neda. Yes, Neil is exactly right. We have a great deal of work to do in terms of the built form testing. That's really the priority right now. We're creating base maps, we're starting from scratch, we're using a lot of the materials that are part of the OPA today. And then we will do the sort of design of built form on a block-by-block basis, we'll take out the, we'll take out the roads, the parks, and we will get, we can ultimately get a blended, shared FSI across the entire site, so one FSI. But we don't expect that that's how the community is going to evolve, it's going to be a little bit of this. You want to have an interesting skyline, you want to have some parts of the Midtown that are focal areas, and maybe they have greater height, and maybe there are other areas that are lower. So, we need to get into that whole process of designing the actual community. What goes where? Where does height go? What does the skyline look like? These are all important considerations that a single blended FSI rate can't address. We'll give that to you the next time we meet in October, we'll have that material. Just on the question about employment numbers, we always hope that people who work in an area will also live in an area, and so that's why we want to create diverse housing opportunities. But really, the employment is just a calculation of the number of jobs that are in Midtown, just the same as we're calculating the number of people that will live in there. So, there's two things, they might not live and work there, but we'll have a job number, and we'll have a people number. Okay?
And just one last, just one last thing, we were looking at, looking at other areas, do we have a schedule for that yet?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't have, looking at other areas is my scope of work, but I think that's something that we can take back to Neil and his team, and that can be discussed and considered and reported back to council at another time.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think it's encouraging, your comments regarding a, what shall I say, varied height and density amongst the area. I think unfortunately, there's many of us who, having heard the high end of 58 stories, was under the assumption it was going to be across the board, and obviously, that is not what we're aspiring towards from your comments, I would assume.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think you're exactly right. We have to do the work in order to answer that question, but my suspicion is, it doesn't all have to be at one height and density, it's close to 58 stories.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councillor Giddings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Commissioner, you started this evening by saying, we have heard you, and we have heard the public. I'd like to thank you very much for that comment, and the, one of the first slides in terms of we are building a new OPA and engaging the community in the look, feel, and aspirations for how Midtown could evolve. Just wanted to thank you very much for those words, and it's apparent that we're on that roadway now. In terms of a couple of questions, I appreciate the ones from my colleagues, how will the proposed engagement opportunities and plans that we have in place fit in with the Parks, Rec, Library Master Plan that's going to be coming back to us, as well as the cultural facilities, agenda items that's coming up fairly quickly as well? Because they seem to me to be tied fairly closely together.
As part of the OPA process, there will be engagement, and as you noted through the transportation master plan, as well as the recreation and parks master plan, there are engagement. Both master plans are actually inputs into the OPA. As you imagine, the, both master plans looks at townwide and all the amenities and requirements and the infrastructures required to ensure there's proper mobility, as well as recreational spaces. So, the team, the staff team that are on the master plans will work closely with the implementation team of Midtown, to ensure that Midtown also covers all the variety of mobility, as well as amenities. Within the Midtown OPA and the implementation plan you see in the later stages, we do develop Midtown master plans for transportation, as well as park and open space. So, that will be coming back here. So, the bottom line is, it will be well-integrated, the community engagement will be separate by project, however, we do tie in and ensure all what we hear from Midtown, as well as townwide, is integrated at the staff level.
Thank you, Commissioner, and there's been a lot of work done before this point, some of the questions this evening, in terms of parking or sidewalks, or whatever. Could you comment briefly on the ATMP, on the bridges and road network, and the flyovers and crossovers, and just to give them a, some sense of the work that's been conducted so far?
Of course. We have previous EAs that was completed for Midtown specifically, and in there, there was recommendations, as you mentioned, there's flyovers, AT crossings, and so on, so forth. All of those information has been incorporated into the base framework of the OPA, and will be reexamined through the Midtown master plan for the mobility side of things. So, it's not lost, the work is not lost, all the input that was done previously will be reevaluated based on the new joint best planning estimates, to ensure that the roads, the infrastructure, the active transportation links are all there to support the overall development of the area.
So, we've got a pretty good head start.
That, that's correct. A lot of the work that we have done in the last years is not lost, and definitely will be incorporated, and further enhanced, actually, to work with the new joint planning assessments.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Commissioner Foo, you did mention EA, and for the benefit of those who may not be familiar with the acronym, it's environmental assessment, correct?
That's correct. We have done a previous EA, environmental assessment for Midtown.
Which is a very broad scope of everything.
It has transportation and stormwater in there, and the region has completed their area servicing study for the infrastructure, which is water and wastewater. So, there is background documents for Midtown that was previously done, that were used as a foundation in testing against the new joint best planning estimates, and revised and refined to ensure it all works together.
Super. Thank you very much. Before I go to second-time speakers, are there any further, sorry? I apologize, councillor Giddings.
That's fine. Commissioner, thank you for that. You mentioned water and wastewater in terms of servicing. Is that what's going to limit or dictate the population at buildout? We have numbers here to 2051. I assume there'll be growth beyond that, depending on where the servicing comes in for water and wastewater?
As part of the implementation program, the servicing study, the master servicing plan will be completed against the joint best planning estimate to the ultimate buildout of 2051. Commissioner Garby previously mentioned we'll be using the 2051 numbers for the servicing to ensure that we build that infrastructure such that it could accommodate that number.
All right, thank you for that. And in terms of employment, you know, there's talk about internationally and nationally significant employment uses. Sounds incredibly exciting. I guess my concern is, for some of the smaller employers, do we have anything from Vaughan or some of the areas that have been looked at, in terms of the urban growth centers, how they're dealing with the experiences we have over the past three years in working from home, and, you know, people going into work a couple days a week? I can't imagine how there's a formula or a plan to see where we're going over the next decade, or two, or three, in terms of what's going to occur. Is this going to be a living document that we update as we go?
Through you, Madam Chair, it is a living document. We don't fully appreciate how things will settle out. I know that earlier on, we're all expecting everyone to work at home all the time for everything, and now it seems to be gravitating back towards the office. So, I think we're a couple of years away from trying to figure out what that balance is, and I think that we'll wrestle through that. We've had a very pragmatic meeting with the Chamber of Commerce to, who raised those same questions, as well as, like, how do we support small business? How do we, how do we deal with work-at-home situations? And so, those are important questions that we hope to take a crack at it, I'll say, at the first instance, but it's something that's going to be a living document, and will have to be amenable to change along the way.
So, it's fair to say our crystal ball will become less hazy as time goes on?
Yes, it may not be Waterford Crystal, but we'll do it. It's, may not be Waterford Crystal, but we'll do it.
I know that's not a planning term, but it's, it sounds accurate. All right. Last question for the consultants that were good enough to join us this evening on, for the presentations that will be coming up. Is that the point where we'd be looking at the road network, including potential park space, open spaces as possible placeholders?
Through you, Madam Chair. Counselor, yes. In the absence of actually having a final road network that's designed, because I know that there are some flyovers that are still being tested, and that's part of the transportation work. And in the absence of having an open space system in place, we would be utilizing the schedules of the OP, the existing draft OPA as placeholders for those elements, knowing that as we move through the process and we get closer to Phase Three, the demonstration plan, those things will become crystallized. We'll test them through the land, the land use block plans in Phase Two. So we'll see different parks and open space systems that do different things, that can ground different areas of, of the planned area. And we'll, we'll see some potential different minor tweaks to the road network. But those things will ultimately be finalized as we move into Phase Three. So yes, placeholders in the beginning, just like the best planning estimate and built-form testing is a placeholder. And it's important because the placeholder gives us a good clue of where we might end up. And then we'll move into the preferred scenario in Phase Three, which will be a very clear understanding of the parks and open space network, what it does, what each of the elements is supposed to do, the role, function, and character of those elements. We'll have also a clear understanding of the active transportation components that are part and parcel of the, the transportation network. So it's not just about moving cars, it's about moving pedestrians and transit users. And so the roads need to really be friendly pieces of infrastructure so that we can, we can all walk and walk in an enjoyable, wonderful environment. Hope that answers your question.
It certainly does. And my last question for you is, you had the Midtown OPA Phase One C key principles. And those were transferred or borrowed from the Vaughan principles. How do we come up with the Made in Oakville principles? Because I quite like the looks of, of all of theirs on that list. Do you come up with those based on feedback? Do we listen to the public and say, "We like that, but we'd also like a side of whatever"?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, Counselor, we will look at your strategic background documents, your strategic plan. We'll find out elements that are about Oakville and what you're about. So we'll, we'll ferret a round of documents. We'll also look at what's in your existing OPA and pull some of those things forward. But we'll also look at best practices from elsewhere. What are other people doing, such as Vaughan, such as Pickering, such as Markham, in terms of grounding their official plan in, in guiding principles and, and the role of the overall UGC? So it's a little bit of all of that. And to top it off, which is really important, we will have public consultation around those principles and what they mean. We really do want to build a Made in Oakville solution. So again, the consultation program is going to be devised to test those principles. Do they relate to the, the members of the community who are here? Will they relate to members of the community who might choose to live here 10, 15 years from now? So I think, and then we'll also ask, are there things that are missing? And through that process of constant engagement, we will, we'll finalize them and we'll end up with a robust set of principles that can ground the official plan amendment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Longo and then Counselor Elgar for a second time.
Thank you, Chair. I guess this question's for Commissioner Garby. Just on the, on the public engagement, there's a really good slide on page 25. I think it's also important, and maybe it's somewhere in here, but the developers and the business owners, at what point are we engaging with them to actually hear the voice of the public and, and the town? Is that embedded in that? Or are they expected to come to those sessions? Because I know the residents' associations, September 12th, hopefully that works out. But is there a way to actually have the, you know, two-way dialogue with developers and, and business owners? Because without them, you know, we've got to have them coming along as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. They are an important stakeholder and we will meet with them individually. And they are welcome to join the regular public sessions as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Elgar.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very concerned with the comment back regarding people per unit. And I do believe the commissioner said they will be using the numbers provided by the region. And I understand that. But I, I'm very concerned that that really has to be relooked at. Because if you look at Stats Canada and the different municipalities, and also Counselor Navnanda recently at a recent meeting said, "The numbers were in Ward Seven." She said, "They're much higher with two and three generations living in a household." And I'm wondering, can we not revisit? Like a two- and three-bedroom apartment does not have even two people going forward? And that's what the water and wastewater and everything is based on? Or are we in fact going back and relooking at those numbers? And to prove that that number is in the, in the ballpark?
Through you, Madam Chair. Firstly, water and wastewater is not in the town's purview, so we need to rely on, on the region. And they do that assessment of the PPU's. We will take that back and have the conversation with them to see what, in more information they can provide for us as to the origin and so on. But that's what I can provide at this moment, Madam Chair.
I appreciate that. I do, I do appreciate that because I think we've got a fundamental problem right off the get-go here. Thank you.
Counselor Havelte.
Thank you, through your chair, Daddick. First, let me say thank you very much for the roadmap and for some additional insights on how we're headed forward. I just have some clarifying questions and then I have some meatier questions. So one of the first public consultations will be with the residents' associations. I deeply appreciate that. I think they have demonstrated a level of commitment and engagement already. And, and I think that having that meeting will help maybe get some clarifying information. And hearing from them about Oakville and what they aspire for Oakville will be helpful. I also concur with Counselor El, El Longo on the fact that, you know, all the stakeholders should be involved in this process. But in terms of timing, a bit of a surprise to hear we will not meet on September 12th. And that we are now further delayed into October, when we asked for this committee on May 23rd and unanimously supported it. I do not disagree that this is a lot of work. However, I'm wondering if we are resourced appropriately to move this along so that we have the information when you're meeting with individuals? So my first question on that is, will we see the, the joint best planning estimates blown out in terms of maybe testing assumptions? I think you used that phrase. Before you go to the, the formal first public consultation? And what is the timing of that?
Yeah. So through you, Madam Chair, just, so it will come to this committee first before it goes to the public. So October 12th.
Okay.
10th.
Early October.
Early October. Whatever, whatever that date is in your calendars is the date.
Okay. And, and is there a, a resourcing constraint that we could break through in order to get back on track for a second meeting in September and to allow us to have time to absorb some of this information? You know, I, I think the public, if they spoke more candidly tonight, would say, "That was a heck of a lot of information to take in tonight." It was great to hear it. And I'm, I'm all in that we're going to start anew. And I'm so glad you've heard us. But it's a lot. And I'm looking out to October and going, okay, so we've got to absorb all that. You're going to go out to a public consultation. Is there a way you can resource this to get us the information in September and have a meeting in September to get us back into a, in more of a, a more timely approach to the plan?
So through you, Madam Chair, the schedule's really set up to, to do that Phase One in September to present into Phase in October. And perhaps Mark can better describe, describe that. I don't think it's a resourcing, it's a volume of work issue, really.
Well, that's a resourcing issue.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor. Very good question. We have been working with Bespoke, who are the consultation experts who are going to pull together the entire consultation program. We have been working with them in terms of the type and nature of engagement at each event. It's, it's their feeling that in order to generate the right amount of outreach and all of the background that supports people participating in, in the public consultation, that the meetings with council and then the meetings with the public should be lockstep so that we can have one and then the other. So first, a committee of the whole, and then a meeting with the broader community. So that the information that's out there to you is very similar information at the same time to the rest of the public. We find that that's a very important part of dispelling misconceptions because information is shared roughly at the same time. In order for them to mobilize for that first consultation, they have indicated to us and to staff that they need that amount of time to mobilize for the first public consultation in October. Some of my work will be done in September, but I don't, I don't feel like I should go out ahead of the entire public consultation program. It's very important that this is all orchestrated collaboratively and together so that important information, you have it and the public has it in, at about the same time. So it's not a lag in terms of resource. It's actually the public consultation specialists in terms of able to mobilize, to make that engagement happen. And they need additional, they need time to do that, to do that work. And it's very important that they can mobilize and, and offer effective outreach so that we do have people participating in these very important engagement sessions.
I will, I'll take your comments under advisement, though I would suggest to you that we can mobilize a whole lot of people fairly quickly, as demonstrated by May 23rd. And I don't disagree that we should be in lockstep, but I guess I really want to make the point that we heard some feedback that, are we slowing things down when we form this committee? And I want it to be really clear that there are lots of members on this council that do not want to slow it down. We are, we're willing to put in extra meetings as needed. And we want the fulsome information in a transparent and clear way so the public and council can come to the best possible options. And I know that's your intent. I'm just worried about the condensing of time. And I'm not seeing additional dates being added in the backend. And I'm, I'm also conscious of those applications that are in the pipeline. In fairness to them, clarity on what our land use rules will be is important. So I've made my point, I'll, I'll move off it. I, I want to just touch on the public engagement and then move to some other parts. So I concur with some of the comments you've already heard. And it sounds like Bespoke is going to try and do some, some pretty creative public engagement process. Can you confirm that the public feedback that's in a virtual meeting will be posted, including an opportunity for all the public to read it? In other words, you know, you're in a virtual meeting and it really will truly be, people can see the chat, people can, can build on the questions, that they are thinking about an engagement process that really brings out good, good thoughts and an opportunity for interplay with individuals when it's a virtual session?
So through the chair, so, yes, absolutely. So the intent for the, the third public engagement event that we have planned, where we're going to be presenting our preferred concepts, it's a virtual engagement room. We've had lots of experience over the past couple of years in, in designing and developing these sort of virtual workshops. But the intent would be to, to document all of the feedback and to provide a comprehensive report back so that everybody can see all of the, the input that's been received and obtained. So there'll be a sort of a, a live online portion of the event where people can, can listen in and hear what other people are saying. But there will also be documentation shared afterwards so that, so that comments and input is, is disseminated throughout the community.
Thank you for that. So one of the things that historically has been a success in the town of Oakville has been the roundtable in-person. I get that where the virtual has lots of things that we can do. But the spirit of it was the interplay. And, and I do think it's incredibly important that we are transparent about what people are thinking and allowing that, that build-on of, "I like that idea and I'd like to go here and there." And those of us that have participated in that always felt heard. And I think that that's critically important. Okay. I want to move to data. And I certainly agree with Counselor Elgar in terms of, we've got to get the basics right. For clarity, the joint planning estimates are less than what are currently in the 2021 addendum for area servicing plan that was part of Midtown. So are we going to see a spreadsheet and that build-out? You got me all excited when you told me what I was going to get this Excel sheet and the technical. And I'm not a mathematician, but I do like those sheets. Are we going to see how, how they correlate to developable area, the unit size? What will be the detail you will provide us with when you share that?
Through you, Madam Chair. I can answer that question. Yes. It will be very elaborate Excel charts. We actually use software that's called Arcicad because it's actually linked to a computer model. So if we make, we need to set up the, the math in the, in the Excel, but it's in this other software. But if we make a change to height or density or add floors, the calculations are immediate. It will be immediate in terms of FSI, height, you'll be able to see, as well as people and jobs. And, and we will make some assumptions around the unit mix in this front-end testing that's consistent with Halton Region and how they see the numbers. So we'll be using their process in, in our computers and we will, if you want to look at an Excel chart, yes, you can. So.
Okay. So just for clarity, will you produce that for the public to see in advance of the meeting? And in, in advance, I mean, not before the Thanksgiving weekend, but like really in advance, giving them five or six days to really read it, review it, understand it? Because I think that's a courtesy we owe the public. They often give up their weekends to review things because we have a meeting on a Monday or Tuesday. Is that something that you guys can take back and consider?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, we can certainly do that. I find that, I've done this before in multiple other communities. Some people like that level of detail. Most people like a summary. But we'll have both, and so people can choose whatever, whatever works for them.
Choice is lovely. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
My other questions are just definition questions. You used the phrase block design and massing when you were trying to explain to us density. Can you just confirm for me, is block design and massing another way to say FSI?
Through you, Madam Chair. Block design involves the configuration of floor plates or buildings, where they're located on a block. You know that because we're dealing with largely mixed use in residential buildings, they're not going to occupy the entire block. There's going to be holes in the block because you want to have light on both sides of a residential building. So when I talk about massing, it's the articulation and configuration of the built form on the footprint, where is the building located? And then extruded up. A podium gets extruded up to, you know, maybe six to eight stories. And then a taller element gets extruded. element gets extruded up to, you know, maybe 20 stories. And we do that on the entire block, and that would give us a density for that block, that one block. Then we do that for every single net density block. Add that all together, that gives us gross floor area total. And then we can translate that into density by dividing that total GFA by the net developable area. That's density. And you can express it as FSI. You can express it as height. We'll have an understanding of what is the general height range that achieves that density.
So if we are using FSI to determine the developable area, are you suggesting there is a height factor in the formula, or is it the end result of the calculation?
It'll be an outcome of the calculation. That's correct.
All right. I think that might need to be clarified on that chart. So will you talk to us all about lot coverage? Because in what you've just explained, the footprint is one of the pieces that we may have a mechanism for control. So will you be talking to us about differentiation in a lot coverage metric that may be able to shape and form Midtown?
Through the Designing Midtown Guidelines, we will be talking about how you, as a council, can control built form. So we'll talk about building location, we'll talk about stepbacks, we'll talk about building widths, maximums, some minimums. We'll talk about height, and we'll talk about building location on a general site. So all of those things that are very important in terms of good quality community building will be embedded in Designing Midtown. In terms of density, again, the way in which I just articulated it kind of includes coverage, lot coverage. The FSI number at the end is an indication of how many times, if you were just going to build over one story over the entire block, how many times are you building just that one envelope that covers the entire block? So an FSI of four means that you're covering that entire block without any takeouts for private open space four times, because there's takeouts, because you're trying to build logical buildings that conform to a standard 22 mid apartment building width, for example. You're going to go higher. You're going to not build on the entire block, but the ultimate lot coverage might be the same. Might be four times coverage. So that's how you kind of explain it. It's a little bit complicated, because you can do it the one way, the old-fashioned way, which is how many times do we cover the block versus how I do it, which is what's the built form articulation, height and massing, and what does that yield in terms of a density? And it's the same calculation.
Okay. So one of my asks for that meeting would for, we've all seen the chart that shows FSI, taking the whole of the ground space and then choosing to go higher versus, so we've seen that picture. But if you could give us some clear examples of different elements where how lot coverage impacts the result of the built form, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, we can provide some examples on a block-by-block basis.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I also wanted to just understand a little bit about how you are going to get to know Oakville. So you've said a lot of things tonight that answered some of my really compelling questions, because the presentation references Vaughan, but Vaughan is a very different community than Oakville. And I think it is really important that we understand how we're going to get at what is truly important to Oakville and a made-in, not just made-in Oakville solution, but rather a plan that lives to our core values. And so you have mentioned the strategic plan that you're going to look there, you are going to ask people to comment. But, you know, I was struck by the Economic Development Council's report in 2022 for Vaughan. What are their strong characteristics and weak characteristics? I mean, it is a clear, it's clear we're very different. I mean, family and natural spaces are at the heart of a lot of what goes on. So I guess my question is, beyond the public consultation and looking at the strategic plan, is there any other research you're going to do around the essence of Oakville? So we have some guidance on best practices to achieve that in Midtown?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm a consultant. I work in lots of different places that I don't know. I don't know them from top to bottom. You know, I've come from Edmonton. I know Edmonton. I know Toronto. I work across North America. I've worked in Barbados, an entire country. I'm very good at understanding things that are important and core values of a people, of a community. We will source and mine your relevant documents, including your existing OPA, but we'll also bring our expertise and eyes from away to add best practices to help formulate the underlying principles of the OPA. We'll keep an open mind, of course, when we go out to meet with your population about what is important to them. We can't instill our values into what this OPA is going to be, but we can bring outside expertise to help make that OPA specific to Oakville and help make it the best OPA that it can possibly be. So that, I promise you, is part and parcel of our commitment to working with you, council, and your community.
Thank you for that, Mark. Just some housekeeping items. Is it possible on the slides that you've produced, that you can put a marker at the bottom that says this is from Vaughan, this is from Vaughan, this is from Vaughan? Some individuals that have reviewed the presentation, because we did have an opportunity to circulate, some folks went, so this is for Oakville, and it's like, no, 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 this is Vaughan, it's just an example. And as you shared it tonight, certainly, we understand it, but somebody going online needs that clarity.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we can certainly do that. We'll just articulate that this is a demonstration of a similar process that was utilized in Vaughan.
Okay. My other ask of staff is, on the Midtown issue sheet, oftentimes, there is a phrase at an upcoming meeting that will be answered. Is there an opportunity to be more specific, that this will be the October, you know, meeting, where this will be, we intend to try and ask that in the November in Phase Two? I think one of the delegates said it very well tonight, specificity and measurement are also part of our accountability. And so if we could do that, that would be helpful.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's a great suggestion. We'll take back and be as precise as we can.
Thank you very much for that. And I really do want to applaud that you said early on, Commissioner, that we want to ground-truth this. Because what resonates with me is that we need to make sure that what we project and send to the public in terms of visuals needs to reflect the real-life experience that we are going to enable through this OPA. And so I guess my closing comment is, any of the renderings or the materials that we're going to share, I think we need to reflect on that pretty clearly, the real-life experience. People said early on, I don't know if it was the June or July meeting, that pretty pictures is not what we're looking for. We really want to, we take very seriously our responsibility to the next generation, and we want to be able to understand, in reality, what is it we will be agreeing to? What is the sheer amount of green space that we will be able to provide? And on that note, I'll add my last comment, which is, I really want to understand green space per person across all of the best practices that you have access to.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sheen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I have one question to clarify for Midtown OPA Phase 1A. So I appreciate those in technical inputs will be used to inform the first round of broadening-based community consultation. I have one question about this mixed-use school strategy. So from my understanding, is that something, I know there's happened in downtown Toronto, canal landing community, so the two elementary school and the community center, they shared one building. So after school, and it's open to the public. So that's for the adults to come in after school programs, something like that. Is this strategy like this similar?
Through you, Madam Chair, to you, councillor. My colleague Lee McGrath is a planner. She's not here. This is the vacation season. She would be able to address this, but the work that we're going to do is going to look at best practices for urban schools. What are they conjoined with? How is the outdoor space situated? Is it on a roof? Is it, you know, where, how does that actually all work? Yes, there are a couple of examples in Toronto, but we need to go further afield and find some other examples, because I think there's only two or three in Toronto. That's not enough to kind of understand what the working or successful working mechanisms of the sort of urban school, mixed-use school is. And so we'll be undertaking that research as part of the first technical exercise, and we'll bring that to you. The other thing that's important about the technical research is it is all based on Oakville. And so when we're talking about getting to know Oakville, when we're talking about the technical studies, we'll be talking about very specific opportunities and issues within Midtown. There will be visuals of issue sets that we need to address through the OPA process. So that's another way to make this process very much focused on Oakville. Again, I'm using examples from other places to demonstrate the process that we're going through, because we haven't yet begun the work that's required for all of that. And as you can see, the work is fairly extensive.
Yes, thank you. Yes, for, as you say, the example is not only we can take in from downtown Toronto, because of the one or two examples, but maybe you can go to the US or Asia, those things have urban school. We have maybe multi-study for school. We have the outdoor space, basketball, soccer, it's on the roof. That's all happening in other cities all over the world. So have you or will you consult this with the school board about this school strategy?
We will. We have a long list of key stakeholders that we need to work with through this entire process. The school boards are one of them. The landlords are another. There's other major agencies that we need to touch base with. So that's all part and parcel of Jacobs' outreach, and so that will be happening concurrently with all of this other work. It's a process of getting informed and building connections and partnerships so that we can make the OPA and the resulting community of Midtown a success.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor McNeice?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question, emphasizing what a number of councillors have mentioned around engaging all stakeholders, all types, making sure developers are well-informed and engaged. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but this OPA for Midtown could be appealed. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's true. That's absolutely true. It will be an official plan amendment, and it's open to appeal as well.
So yeah, just want to emphasize robust engagement. I think it's worth the investment. You know, I know in Burlington, they've been doing developer roundtables, things like that, to make sure they're well-informed, well-engaged. You know, it's about finding a balance that works for everybody, because an appeal, I don't know what the timelines are now, but on OPAs, I've seen them take many months, years. And I think that would leave us quite vulnerable for an MZO or a ministerial zoning order if we're stuck in an appeal. So just want to emphasize what you've heard from many others, the robust engagement of all stakeholders is critical to this. Thank you.
Councillor Grant?
Can't hear you, Councillor Grant.
I like this. When we're talking about robust engagement, I would like to point out that north of the QEW, we don't have a great deal of citizen groups, community groups. And so I'd like to make sure when they go forward, looking for people to get engaged in this process, we do try and find different ways of trying to get out to the communities and reach out to the individuals who may not be part of a community organization of some sort, just so we can get a number of people engaged north of the QEW. I know of a number of people I've spoken to who are concerned about looking down towards the Lake area and seeing all these tall buildings. And I believe their voices need to be heard just as much as the people who are part of the community groups. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have any other further speakers or questions? Councillor Hasidio, apologies.
No, I put it up at the last minute. I note on the issues chart that there is a response that talks about a terms of reference between Jacobs and the town staff. Is that a public document? It's a tracking tool, from what I gather, around the quality, the work in progress, et cetera. Is that a public document, and is that a document? Because that speaks to the gentleman's question earlier about, you know, who's in charge and what's and who's responsible for what.
Through you, Madam Chair, Councillor Hasidio. The document that Jacob submit to the town, as we are the, we oversee the overall program, is that they provide us regular program updates. As typical consultants do, they'll provide us with their invoice and the work to date according to the contract. And that information is a program, project management document that staff receives, and we review regularly to ensure progress of the program is appropriately conducted.
So it's not a public document?
It's a working document. Of course, it could be made public if there's an FOI request.
Okay. Thank you for that. And the last, I just wanted to get some clarification about precincts. So I'm not sure which slide it was, but there was a comment about precincts and things may, could vary, that we don't have to have one precinct across, you know, just two separate precincts, one across Davis, et cetera, and one Cornwall, et cetera. So is there a thought that we have options around precincts? Because that was at the heart of the question that was being asked before, is there viability in the current Midtown plan where there is distinct differences in precincts?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think I can answer that. A precinct strategy is really about capturing a unique character with a unique set of uses, which may have a different height characteristic. It may have a defining public realm component. As an urban designer, you want to build a community that has different places embedded within an area that are recognizable and understandable. You want to be able to say, I work next to that beautiful civic park, and here's my place of employment, and here's where I get my coffee in the morning. But that can evolve into an employment precinct. It could also evolve with an educational component, through discussions with educational providers in the region or in your existing community. So precinct strategies with different characteristics really become the different types of mixed-use neighborhoods that are the foundation of the OPA. So yes, I would explore those through the block plan that we're proposing in Phase Two. We would look to explore different arrangements of urban structure, different arrangements of precincts and uses and character areas that would have a different role, maybe create Midtown as more of a cultural destination or as an employment destination. But we need to get into that work, create it, and then bring it out to the public, because what we're interested in is, what do you think about this? What do you like about it? Do you like the fact that, you know, Cross Avenue is the main street? Or do you like a main street that's more embedded in the community and doesn't also have a transit function on it? These are the kinds of questions of look, feel, character that we need to get at through the land use block plans. And that's what that whole phase is all about.
So Mark, you left me on a high note, and I thank you for it, and I'm looking forward to it. And my ask would be that the issues tracking chart be edited by Jacobs to reflect some of Mark's spirit around what and why. Thanks very much, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, last call. Are there any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to say thank you to the members of the public who took the time to come, attend, engage, comment, ask. who took the time to come, attend, engage, comment, ask questions. Very, very important for the benefit of those who were not here in person. Please submit your questions, your concerns to either your member of council or to myself and Counselor Longo. They will be captured, they will be passed on formally to our staff for answering. So I did want to share that with you. And with that, we're adjourned.